Call to order, the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. If I could get a roll call, please.
Gesmi.
Here.
Groot.
Here.
Jepson is gone. Johnson?
Here.
Gronenberger is absent. Lindell?
Yep.
And Montgomery.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Diane, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That gets us to public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Becky Youngmark, to talk about minutes corrections.
Good evening. I just wanted to bring your attention, something that needs to be corrected on the minutes for tonight. So if you look on page two, it's talking about the public hearing for Sandstone Ridge property sale. The second sentence, and it's talking about Neil, he noted that the planning commission and the park board have recommended approval of the property sale. Park Board did not recommend the property sale. We can only recommend the parks. And if you look at the draft minutes that we'll be approving Thursday night, you can see the motion, and the motion was to recommend the city council approve the Towering Bluffs Parkland designation. So we did not approve or suggest the approval of the property sale. We only did the parkland. And also, I noticed in there with council member Johnson, bringing up the location of the parks and stuff. I also brought that up. I am concerned that they're not centrally located. I am concerned about children getting hurt and going through other people's property to try and get to the parks. Laura assured me that all those trails would connect, and there would be a safe way for them to get back and forth to the parks. But that was a concern we did discuss. Just so you know, I don't know if it got brought up or not. But, so the park board only recommended the parks, not the approval of the sale. So, thank you.
Thank you. Babel Gorman, Project Tulip.
May I give you some information? After the last meeting, three weeks ago or whenever it was, I got an interesting email from a CF insider. Don't know who it is, it's anonymous. Cannon Falls Insiders, what I guess it must be. Talks about, here's the truth, everyone on the council except Diane knows about Project Tulip. Well, I know that's not true. I did ask a couple other council members that know nothing about it. It goes on to say that you'll be kicking yourself for all the time and money you've spent on this. I have spent very little time and absolutely no money on this, costing the city money. And for the life of me, I don't know why we couldn't just come up with the public information and it be shared by the city administrator with you folks. It's beyond me. At any rate, I also have an email attached there that's quite lengthy, and I am challenging the completeness of the data that I received. I didn't even get the city engineer's bill, which should be absolutely ready and available at any time. It's public information, but it's not, and I don't have a copy of it, even though inquired. If I do not get the public information that I know is out there and available, I will take this a step further. Now, you people are not aware that I have contacted the state, other than I've told you, but I'm sure that the administrator has not shared with you the information that the state sent to the city of Cannon Falls. That also is public information, but you folks probably don't have any of it. Thank you for your time.
All right. That moves us forward to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. I'll go through these real quick. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period that ended August 30th. Item B, meeting minutes for the August 15th city council meeting. Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 395, summary of publication and ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls to amend zoning ordinance. Item D, second reading and adoption of ordinance 396, summary publication ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, to amend the Cannon Falls zoning ordinance. Item E, resolution 2696, accepting the Department of Economic Development's appropriation for John Birch Park wall rehabilitation project. Item F, approve the body worn camera audits. Item G, approve disposal of Pro Vision body worn camera hardware. Item H, approve hire of police officer Nathaniel Fox. Item I, approve hire of unscheduled part-time EMT Anthony Rink. Item J, approve full-time ambulance employees callback pay. And item K, approve Cannon Cruisers Car Club use of Minneska Park for the VFW event. Is there anything that the council would like to pull down? Diane?
A, no, and now B because of the correction of the minutes.
Does it, does it need to be pulled down because of the correction?
Yeah, unless we, oops, unless we can just do that.
Pull it down and make it a separate item? Absolutely.
Okay.
Item B, pulled down?
And then K.
K. The car cruisers. All right. Any others? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion from Lindell, second from Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That gets us to council business. Item A, resolution 2697, adopting the preliminary tax levy and budget that's collectible in 2024 and setting the public meeting date. Neil?
Well, we've had a couple work sessions discussing the preliminary budget for 2024. Unless you guys want additional information, I'll just hit the highlights. Otherwise, we'll maybe just do some question and answer, if you have any. Some of the highlights that we have this year is we kept it under the 4% or at 4% as you guys requested. The tax levy increase is about $128,646. In Venergy, we receive a fee from them every year that went up $62,914. We did get a nice increase in local government aid of $109,621. And with CD rates going up, as everybody has been maybe watching that things are, bond interest and CD rates are going up, we did have an increase, and we did talk about this at the work sessions, how some of them CDs are callable. I'm, I don't have faith in keeping them all for 2024, so we did cut back on the amount that would be available to us. So we set that at $90,000. Some of the, some of the expenses that we will incur in 2024, we did the pay study, the salary increases for the full-time. Well, the people that were on the pay study, there was a couple of part-timers on there too. Was $156,000. Capital equipment increase of about $60,000, and then again, the overall general increase of 4%. What are we going to do in 2024? Well, we're going to finish up our reconstruction project on just north of the river, over by Third Street. We'll be bidding that out in a month or so, right, Bill?
Yeah, we'll be at the next council meeting asking for approval to go out to bid.
Yeah, for that second half that we approved the lift station and the boring, and now we'll be doing the second half. Equipment is, purchasing for 2024 is a little light in the public works. We're looking to buy a new mower and our yearly trade-in for the John Deere skid steer. We don't know where the police squad situation sits. They keep trying to get squads, but we'll see if we can, we'll get one in the fleet maybe next year, we hope. So with that, the proposed levy for 2024 is $3,435,602, which is a 3.89 increase for 2023. The date for the public hearing is scheduled for November 21st, and the adoption will be on December 19th, each at 6:30. Is there anything else that you would like me to go over?
Any questions?
Of course. I noticed that in the library budget, it still had building rent. I thought we had decided that that would be a transfer to the library capital account.
I'll change that when I hit the final.
Okay. And then I also noticed that there were no expenditures listed for hardwood estates, and I assuming that there should be some?
There should be, but we don't know what that answer is yet. When we make the transfers, it'll be all internal. So when, when if we have the bids coming out, and while you're going to advertise for bids tonight, maybe if you approve it, then we'll be able to put some numbers together. But it'll all be internal transfers from general fund to a hardwood estate 500 number.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve resolution 2697, adopting the preliminary tax levy and budget collectible for 2024. Motion from Lindell?
I'll second.
Second from Groot. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Onto item B, hardwood estates. Laura, if you would like to take this.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have the final plat and PUD for your review and approval. We're in our final stage of this process. We've done the planning commission. We have had the, the preliminary plat and PUD was presented on August 15th to all of you. And now we've had the, the final plat and PUD is, like I said, was presented to you last week in your packet, and so we're just looking for your approval. We did have one suggestion, or we had an email that actually came out from MINDOT that came out after your packet was sent out to you. So they are requiring a right turn lane, not a bypass lane, but a right turn lane on Highway 19. So that will have to be adjusted, so your approval tonight would be conditional upon that being added to that particular plat. But otherwise, with the approval this evening, then we would also be looking for the approval of the other resolution of 2699 to go ahead and advertise the project for bids. But I would entertain any questions if you had any otherwise. Due to the pre-plat, there weren't any suggested edits or modifications to the plat.
Wasn't that right turn lane kind of bounced around?
At first, they had said that we wouldn't need it for the, they didn't think that we would need it for the first phase of the first 29 lots, but after review, they'd said that they would, they're requiring it. But I believe that they were saying that, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but they'd said that initially it was going to be a bypass lane, but now they're just saying a right turn lane, correct?
Right, correct. Think of a full left, left turn lane, you know, full intersection. So one way to look at this is this is actually less than we thought was going to be needed, but sooner than we thought it was going to be needed. So Neil and I talked a little bit this afternoon, and we think sooner is not ideal, but less is definitely better, you know, not having to do as much, so we feel that as a positive.
Well, that's the only thing that's changed from what you brought up.
Correct, yeah.
Lisa, did you?
No, I was just watching.
Diane?
And just on that, does the highway department pay for that, or do we have to pay for that? And is this on Highway 19 or 25? 19?
19.
It's on 19.
It would be on 19, yep.
And it is up to the developer, in this case, the city, to pay for that.
And so it will be kind of like they did across from St. Anne's Cars?
Not familiar with that, but basically on that south side right now, there's a right turn lane there. It'd just be continued. So cost-wise, we just got this requirement as well, so we haven't put pencil to paper. Neil asked me ballpark, and I'm always nervous about throwing out a number because you guys are going to hold me to it, but I told him less than $50,000. If I was guessing, it's probably in that 35, 40 range, but, you know, we, we just made aware of it, so I'm going to be a little cautious on telling you a number.
Does it intrude into the property at all, or is this, is there all room for this on the highway?
It's all, it's all in the highway, state highway right away.
Any other questions from the council? Or discussion? Not hearing any, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2698, approving the final plat and the final PUD plan for hardwood estates. So moved. Motion by Gesmi.
I'll second.
Second from Groot. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The pass is three to one. That brings us to item two, resolution 2699, approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisements for bids. Laura, if you'd like to, do you want to touch that again, or just discussion?
It would just, it would just be a discussion item. Basically, it would just, just kind of the formal request and approval from the council to put the project out for bid. Then we could, as of tomorrow, post it. It would, I don't believe that it's actually going to run in the paper in tomorrow or Thursday's issue, but it can be posted online and then, but that way it'll have enough time for the bids to be opened on the 27th of September with your approval.
Questions from the council? Go ahead.
So this is for the bid, right?
We would put the project out for bid, yes, so that any one that's interested, any contractor that's interested in moving the dirt for us and putting the bid out for the info.
I'm sure Bill's pretty much got it all put together, but now we got to put that right turn lane in before the specs go out then?
So what, what we've talked, so we were just made, we just, you know, Neil hadn't heard this until today. So our tentative plan is we will issue, so once you advertise for bids, up until generally about three days before the bids, you can do what's called an addendum to the plans. So we will add this in, in the next week or so, we'll add that to the plan. And then, you know, so that the bids are received on the 27th. Ideally, you know, we wouldn't take it right to the last minute, three days, but you get it out there a week ahead of time so the contractors had time to adjust.
Thank you. Diane, you had a question?
Yeah, and I, maybe it's more for Neil. And there again, I am trying to understand the budget and funds and everything else. Where is the money for this project going to be taken from?
Is this relevant to asking for bids?
Well, we got to pay for them if we go out for bid.
For the advertisements?
Well, they're going to come back with a figure, which if we accept the bid, that means we got to pay for it. So I just.
But this is one step at a time. This is just asking for approval to advertise for bids.
But.
If you, if you want to answer the question, go ahead, but the motion that, or the resolution.
If you don't want to answer, that's fine.
No, what I'm just saying, the resolution.
Doesn't matter. We've said all along that we're going to take care of this internally. Pending really, really, really outrageous costs, I think we can do it internally. Sarah and I have, Sarah and I and Michelle will, will sit down and we'll talk it over, and we'll have a discussion on where we're going to get the funds from, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2699, approving the plans and specs and ordering advertisements for bids. So moved. Motion by Lindell?
Second.
Second by Gesmi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carries three to one. That brings us to, it'll be listed as item C for council business. What was item B on the consent agenda, the meeting minutes? Diane, do you want to talk about it, or just what Becky had said?
Yeah, what, Becky, just if we just remove that part thing, it should be fine, I assume, correct?
Would you like to make a motion?
And I, with that correction, I move to approve.
All right. Motion by Diane, second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Brings us to item D for council business, which was item K.
Oh, she, you had A too, didn't you?
Yeah.
No, I thought she was.
I had A, B, but at this point, you know, I don't think it's, yeah, I had one question on.
Let's do K first, and then we'll go back to A, okay? So what was item K is now council business D. Approve the Cannon Falls Cruisers Car Club and their use of Minneska Park. Diane, you brought that down.
Yeah, and I 100% support the vets club. Cannon Cruisers is great. When I looked at Minneska Park to, you know, refresh my memory from what I, I keep thinking, how are they going to get cars down there? Are they going to park on the grass or, I mean, it is in by the swans.
Have you ever called, have you ever heard of full send?
What?
Full send?
Full send?
Full send.
No.
Put her to the boards, you'll make it.
Yeah, but I mean, part of it is, I didn't know if they were planning to drive them down there on the bike path, or if they're going to park on the grass, because right now we are in such a drought.
Jed, do you know how they're planning on?
I'm not. I'm not for sure, but I know that we drive our trucks down the, the bike path and into the grass down there when we service the park, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. And it's not going to be bad on the grass for the cars to be parked down there?
It's already dead.
Yeah, this is true.
Yeah, I would think they'd come off of, is that?
Fourth Street.
Third Street there, that where the bike path kind of goes by them houses, and then under the bridge there, you know? That's the way I would do it anyway.
Yeah. No, that was my only concern was. I just kept looking at it and thinking, there's no parking lot in that park.
It could have a curb if maybe.
There we go. Then, then I have no problem with it.
Is that a motion to approve?
That is motion to approve.
Motion from Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I got a second from Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So then, out of order, but we'll pull down item A, the just incorrect claims accounting period, and that will be item E for council business. Diane, you also pulled that down.
Yeah, and it, it's there again, it's a question on page four. We have under the lawyer fees, basically, you know, like we have July, I figured out Molinar, Tallerine, Reimer, Endress, and then the, the top one didn't have a project kind of listed, and I, that was the only thing I didn't know. It just has $2,872.50, but it didn't have a dash after it.
You said page four?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, just the July development, it doesn't say anything afterwards.
It's not charged any project.
Yeah, most of them have a little dash that indicates what project they go to.
I see what you're saying, yeah. So 235, planning and economic, $2,872.50, July development.
I'll have to look at the invoice.
Okay.
And get back to you on that.
That, like I said, I could figure out all the others, and I thought, hmm, maybe it's invisible ink. No. Thank you, Neil. Then I move to approve.
Motion to approve from Diane, do I have a second? Second from Gesmi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That gets us to our reports. I don't see Maggie here for chamber, joint trail board.
Meeting was canceled.
Okay.
Lack of anything to talk about.
Okay. And EDA, Laura, mostly items that were on tonight's agenda, so. Department heads, Jed, do you have anything for us?
Actually, I do. Back in May of 2022, council approved the purchase of a new plow truck due to issues with supply chain issues. We finally were able to get the cabin chassis. It actually got delivered to Boyer today. But because of the, so the dump bed and the plow and everything that goes on it now, because it's been so long, we had to get a new bid for, for that through TBEI, and it came in, the original quote was for $136,157 for, for all that, and our new quote is $161,134. I just wanted to inform the council, this is, it's still, back in '22, you had two bids from Crystill and TBIE. Crystill was $177,000, so we're still below Crystill, but that's $25,000 we weren't planning on. So it's just cutting into our, our future budget, so. And then the other ish, or item of business I have is the, they broke ground on the Third Street lift station today. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Jed. Bill?
Well, I'll just segue right off of that. Neil mentioned earlier, Jed, you know, there was a phase two to the, to the 2023 street project, so that will be coming on the 19th to the council for approval to go out to advertisement for bids. That'll also start the final assessment process. So we'll be setting that in motion. We're kind of in the middle of the process there. We've already had the preliminary hearings, so now we'll open bids. We'll have the final hearing, you know, later this fall. And then the other one, 72nd Avenue Way in connection with hardwood estates. That's the existing gravel road we'll be, you know, entering the new subdivision on. So that assessment process will be beginning as well, so we'll be talking about the next council meeting also.
Thank you. Anything on John Birch Park?
John Birch Park, which part? The first base or third base?
Either, either. I've got, I've had people that are saying, nothing's going to happen with football. I said, nope. I said, all the projects, football season's going to be just fine.
I'll let Jed talk third.
If you.
So our public, public works did most of the demolition of the, the building with the help of Doug's backhoe service. Right now, today, they just placed the, poured the cement for the pillars, for the lights, and then I think that's all that's going to happen. I think we're going to fence everything off to try to keep people out of the construction, construction zone. But as far as I know, football's a go, the bleachers are there. Yeah, so now we're just waiting for the John Birch Park, the Bears, or whoever it is that, to get their contractors in there to start working, working on that.
Wonderful.
And then on the first base, I might be stealing Laura's thunder because she's been working on the, the grant agreement from the state for the bonding request. So I'll let Laura cover that, but the engineering side, tentatively, will be coming to the council meeting on the 19th with an agreement to begin that design process.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zach?
I don't think I have anything tonight.
All right. Laura?
Well, since Bill said something, I suppose I should fill you in on it. Yeah, so we have the contract agreement for the, from deed for the appropriation application for the John Birch Park funds for the $469,000. So I'm just wrapping that up, so it'll just, once I get everything plugged in, we'll review it kind of internally. It shouldn't, I don't know if it has to come to council to review, or if it's, I think it's just a matter of us just submitting it to them, and then that's, then it's kind of in their hands to release the funds and then getting the project. I'm assuming getting that bid and then getting that scheduled for next year.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, mayor. So this past year, the legislative session, they legalized marijuana. If you recall, the previous legislative session, they legalized edibles, and the police commission did a bunch of work on ordinance related to edibles. The council decided not to move forward on it. With the changes in the law for legalized marijuana, it was part of a very large bill. I've been going through it, the league's been going through it. But the league is giving some recommendations for direction to cities. And the easiest way to think about it is treat it the same way you treat liquor. And so. And so before I embark on having discussion with my police commission and trying to put together proposed ordinances, I just wanted to find out the feelings of council, if you wanted to move forward with what the league is recommending that, you know, cities consider or not. The police commission is made up primarily of volunteers. I don't want to have a bunch of work into it to have the council say, eh, we don't want to do anything. So essentially, what the league is suggesting that be done is you look at regulating it in public areas, parks prohibiting it. It's not supposed to be utilized or smoked around persons under 21, but that makes it very hard for an enforcement standpoint. You know, if you take your family to the park and somebody's standing around smoking marijuana, you complain, the officers show up, they say, well, I wasn't doing that. Just having it in the park would, would in of itself be prohibited, much like we do with liquor. They are recommending implementing licenses and licensing for retail, for wholesale, essentially anything that the state is going to regulate a license on, they're recommending overlaying a local license on. We still have no idea what the Office of Marijuana, I can't even remember what their new title is, but we have no idea what their enforcement section is going to be like. With the edibles, it was essentially two people for the entire state. So they weren't putting a lot of effort on, you know, complaints. So the league is recommending that you implement local licenses, so if there are problems, you get somebody who's not following the rules, you would sanction them, just like you, you know, do with your liquor licenses now, giving the cities some control over it rather than waiting for the state to do something. And then the third thing that they were recommending is implementing a moratorium. And you've probably seen, a lot of cities have started taking some of these actions already. The moratorium would not apply to the existing edible business, but it would apply to the legalized marijuana side that the state is creating the, the office to oversee. And so those are the three things that the league is recommending, and I'm just kind of curious, I don't need to vote or anything, I'm just looking for kind of a consensus if it was something we should move forward in trying to prepare some information for you guys as far as proposals or not.
Is this something that you'd like to have a discussion with the police commission first, or you want it to go straight through a discussion?
I'm not, I'm not asking for, for your recommendations on it, just if that's something, if you would want to follow the league's recommendations, then I'll go to work with the police commission on trying to, you know, do the research and implement what we think would be appropriate for our community.
And this would not affect our local business industrial part, mini grow?
Nope, because they're not, they're not operating legal marijuana grow, they're, they're doing a hemp. So we would, we would, and of course, they're going to end up being licensed as part of this anyway, is our, all of our edible retailers. Coming up, I think in October, they're going to have to register their licensing and stuff with the state.
So I thought I heard it'll still be close to a year and a half or so for the state to get their stuff?
Yep.
Wouldn't that, like, wouldn't our moratorium be kind of redundant since nobody can really operate it anyway?
Well, we have no ideas when the state is going to throw open the doors and say, go.
Okay.
And what the league is recommending is you put a moratorium in place so that you don't have somebody just open up a business in the, in the, in the dark, waiting for them to throw the lights on.
Okay.
Because the licenses could become very competitive. You're allowed a minimum of one per 14, you know, 12, 12,500, but we're obviously not that big. But we will fall into regulations as to the number that are allowed within the entire county. And so if the county sets a limit of three or four of them based on our county population, retailers are going to try to figure out where they think they're going to do the most business. So if they open four of them in, in Red Wing, and the county has said our moratorium is four, then you won't get any other ones opened. But if the county says, you know what, you can have 20 of them, then maybe we would see five here in Cannon Falls. No idea. Nobody knows what the ground rules are going to be. The earliest the state is projected to have some of that information available is likely mid-2024.
So when you're talking about a license, are you referring to like having, like a dispensary or?
So dispensary, edibles, grows, processing, basically anything related to the marijuana industry, the state is going to require a license for. And my recommendation be at a local level, we just layer on top of that, much like we do with liquor, on sale, off sale, 3-2, et cetera.
I'm very comfortable with going with what the league recommends and having you guys look at that.
I like the idea of everything that was said except the, I'm almost with Derek with the moratorium. Like, I'm all for treating it like liquor, our parks, protecting the public, so that, I mean, people consuming on their own legal, that's great, but treating it like, like you said, liquor, the licensing, yep, local level, little bit of a control, I understand that. Moratorium seems a little, I don't know if I'd say we're done, but it just seems like, is the county going to be weighing in on this, as you were saying in your hypothetical?
I have no idea what they're doing. I'm watching what cities are doing, and we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of cities place moratoriums in effect. The longest you can put a moratorium in a place is January 1 of 2025. So it can't extend beyond that. And what cities are, are putting in place are moratoriums so that they're understand what the rules that the state is going to implement. Because remember, you can be more restrictive, you just can't be less restrictive. So if the state doesn't regulate the fact that you can't put a dispensary across the street from an elementary school, and somebody does, and you have no regulations on it, you can't stop them. Kind of like a, I don't know, residential treatment center. If you don't have the restrictions on it, you're stuck with what you get.
If we put a moratorium, or if you recommend that we do, we could lift that moratorium early, correct?
Yep. It is not an absolute forever, it's just it either expires or you lift it earlier. If the state were to come out, say, in September and say, here's the published rules, they're approved, and we now know what that impact has on us, you could say, you know what, we're ready to lift our moratorium. If there's, you know, four businesses that want to come to town, here's the rules you play by. And essentially, by putting a moratorium in place, one of the things that you have the advantage of is that you don't have somebody that essentially, as I said, opens up a business in the dark and then, you know, throws the light on, and you don't have any ability to control.
So if someone did randomly open up a dispensary in town, and they're not licensed because we're not, we don't have license.
Well, nobody, nobody could open one at the moment.
Okay.
Because the state, state requires a license, and they haven't put in place the.
They would have to get a license first.
The components. We just don't know what those components are going to be. Nobody knows what they're going to propagate as their rules.
Okay.
The, the body isn't even in existence. They've assigned the creation of the new office within an existing division of the state, but they're talking about probably March before they have the director and staff hired.
Okay.
Could we get an opinion from our city attorney? Would that be something?
Pardon, Steve?
I just wonder if we should get an opinion from our city intern, our city inter.
City attorney.
Yes, we could certainly get an opinion from the city attorney of, I'm, I'm guessing their firm is probably working on these for other cities that they represent. There's been quite a few that have already implemented.
But you're just asking us tonight?
Not asking for action, I'm just saying, should we, should we start having the police commission moving forward, researching this and bringing you guys some proposals?
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing.
Neil?
Talk about moratoriums, we do have one in effect that we're going to start working on now that we've gotten three developments almost complete. We've been kind of spending most of our time on that, but we put a moratorium on about, oh, several months ago, I don't even remember. We've got a, got a year that we can take care of it, but we're going to start working on that now and, and be talking to the planning commission and see what their thoughts are, and, and we'll bring it back to the council and see where, where it lands, so.
All right. Lisa, anything you'd like to bring up tonight?
Nope, not tonight.
All right. Derek?
I know I've talked about this with Neil before, but is there anything we can do about the eyesore on Dow Street with the tarp that's torn to shreds, the plants and weeds that are out of control, and the broken windows? I'm referring to the old nursing home, for those that don't know.
Yeah, so it is one of the, the sites that we're working on. The, the biggest problem, and that's more of a commercial, so it's a little different animal, but previously, when we had our own city attorney's office that handled prosecutions, we would just move through the steps, issue a citation, and we usually gained compliance about 95% of the time. But with switching to the county attorney's office, we followed our normal protocols, and they've dismissed the citations. They feel that that's something that should be handled by our city civil attorney rather than through the criminal process. So I've worked with the city attorney beginning part of this year. We've implemented steps that we're marching through, so to speak, on our, our problem properties, but there is not a fast process. I don't believe anybody was on this council. The last time we had to move through one of these, it took about 28 months.
Wow.
To get to the point where we could get a court order for the civil cleanup. So they are not fast. I expect that the EDA and the administrator will be working on that property and trying to find a, a permanent use for it that'll resolve much faster than we would through that process.
Okay.
But it is something we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Diane? Steve?
Officer.
School, first day today. A lot of kids out there, just ask drivers, be careful, pay attention, the pedestrians. Glad to see the kids out, back to school, summer is done, but drivers need to be safe